And we live streamed.
Okay, hello everybody. It's me, Father Rob. You may see me kneeling, bending my head a little bit here. I'm gonna be using this whiteboard behind me, so I may move my screen back and forth, so you can see it better, hopefully. But there's nothing wrong, I have no problem with my neck or anything, it's just I have to do this in order to use to get it on the, on the, on the screen, right? Okay. So tonight, we're gonna, we're in our second session, of course. Last week, we talked about the sign of the cross. This week, a couple of people asked me a couple of questions during the week, and I want to address those, those, those questions first. But one of them kind of leads right into what I was gonna talk about this week anyways, one of them was the on the different symbols and that you see when you come into a church. And this doesn't have to be St. Pius, it can be any church, and most, more specifically, symbols of Christ, things that signs and symbols of Christ that we see. And some of them, we may, you may not even realize are signs and symbols of Christ. The first one, of course, as we did last week, the sign of the cross. And we see, I have it, hopefully you can see that there. All right, I drew that. That's a very rough drawing of a cross by myself. I didn't use the usual rule or anything, so and I tried to color in the lines and everything, so for all you teachers out there, I never was very good at coloring the lines. But that's a cross, and of course, originally, the shape that they, when they first started using the cross as a as a sign or a symbol, it was a T, just a, just a regular capital T that we would, we would print in English. It was like that, because it was, it was after a Hebrew word, Tau, as I told you last week, was, was a a sign of the cross, and that was the sign, was a sign that Ezekiel spoke about being made on the heads of of the righteous in Jerusalem before the exile, so that they would be saved from the exile. Because God would save, would spare them from the exile, because they were the righteous ones. Now, it also, so it became an image of being saved, and it also became an image of an image of, of course, the crucifixion, that Christ's death on the cross. So it became an image of Christ. But, as I said last week too, that any symbolism of the cross really didn't take hold until about, about the second century common era, so that so about 100 years after the death of Christ, then it started to come into, into shape a little bit, people started to use it more. It became more, as I said, more used in churches and, well, not churches, but in in celebrations of, of Christ by the community. Now, one of the, one of the reasons for that, of course, is that the cross and crucifixion were so connected to one another. And that was a horrible, horrible way to die. I'm sure that, well, I hope that none of us have ever seen an execution of anyone. And I know I have never seen that, and I hope that none of us have ever seen that, but it's it was a public execution. It was a torturous execution, it was a brutal execution. And, and so to connect it to any kind of religious celebration, even Christian celebrations, was a very difficult thing to do, especially that, at that point in time. Because the Romans were using it pretty, pretty generously in their in that time period, especially in Palestine, where the church was taking its roots and beginnings. And and so it was, and when they, when they crucified people, they put them out on the streets for everybody to walk by and see. People walked by, they heard them moaning and groaning and screaming with pain. And so they, so it was a hard symbol to use as a, as a religious symbol, you might, you might think, especially as a symbol of salvation. But it was under, I mean, the Christians certainly understood that Jesus had to go through the cross to a certain extent, but they hadn't developed any theology of it as such, but they understood that he died on the cross. They understood that he had risen from the dead. They understood that connection between them and that, and that both were necessary. But they still would be too hard and too difficult for them to, to see the cross without, also, because again, at that point in time, that first century in Palestine, where the church was growing and beginning its, gaining its roots, it was also under much persecution at that point in time. First, most, mostly from the Jewish people that were there, who, who were throwing them out of the synagogues, because they were proclaiming Christ as the, as the Son of God. And they, they thought that blasphemy, so they were throwing them out of the synagogues. And because, also by Roman authorities, who would sometimes backlash on the new, because they proclaimed Christ to, to be greater than Caesar. So it would result in sometimes them being stoned to death or crucified. Again, by Roman authorities, mostly. So, so there would be people that they knew, aside from Christ, who died on the, on crosses. I mean, and before they, like, for the apostles, before Jesus, before they met Jesus, they were probably people they knew who had died on a Roman cross. And, and they had seen and heard and witnessed this torture and this death. Not of, not only of Jesus, but of their other friends and, and neighbors as well, so they, so they knew it to be a terrible, terrible thing. So it didn't really take hold until about 100 years after the death of Jesus, the second century. In early Christianity. And then it started gaining a little momentum then, for, for lack of a better word, I guess. It started being used more. And, and this was, well, as, as I said, at first it was a T, then it, then it came into this, this side a little later, around the third century, around the year 200 or so in those, and that, in the 200s, it, it began to be changed to this, to this sign, that's more the Latin cross. The Greek cross was more the T as well, so. And the other, the other thing that, another reason why it didn't, wasn't popular in the first century, and for Jewish converts to Christianity, was because that the synagogues were also throwing them up, because they were telling them that they were worshiping idols. Because they, they had this, this cross as a, as a symbol of Christ, of the symbol of God, a symbol of salvation. And they, they, hearing that, they had, they had been thrown out of the synagogue, because it was blasphemy. Again. Now, I'm gonna kind of skip ahead a little bit, but they in the, around the sixth century in the, in the 500s, there's a, an instance of the St. Thomas cross became, began to gain, gain some popularity. This one was one was that like three leaf clovers that I'm not very good at drawing, you can see. But it had the three leaf closes, clothes on the ends. And and so that, that is called the St. Thomas cross, and that was very popular in southern India, where Thomas was, is reported to have gone after in, as part of, as his missionary work, he had gone out to India to proclaim the message of Jesus to that, to that part of the world. And and he had gained many converts, and, and they, they found this cross to be a very popular sign and symbol at that time there in, in India. Then the a little, around the 10th century, another cross appears, not with the clover leaves on it, one with a bar across the sometimes across the top like that, and sometimes across the bottom like that. Not, not for the feet, and not for the head, and not for the INRI, but just as a sub, like a separate bar, but a smaller one, a much smaller one. This was the patriarchal cross, it's called. And it's a Latin cross. And as I said, it's an additional bar, it first appears in the 10th century. And, and of course, we all know, all us Irish people know of the Celtic cross. Now, the Celtic cross has a little, I think, a little semicircle in there. A circle in there, and and it but this, this cross was in existence well before Christianity. The Celts were using this as part of their religious ceremonies, their pagan religious ceremonies, well before Christianity. But when the Christians came to Ireland and to, and to Celtic, the Celtic countries, what they did was, they incorporated that, of course, into the Christian message. As, and they, they used it to evangelize people, they were saying that, look, you've already had, you already obviously have some sense of, of of Christ, because you, you know the cross, and this, this is what that cross means. They said, you know, you don't, you didn't realize what it meant, but you're still wise enough to see that it's an instrument of hope and of salvation. And so they, they explained that, they gave them the full explanation of it to the Celtic people. And of course, another symbol incorporated into the cross was the crucifix. Now, the crucifix, of course, places the body on the cross. And the crucifix really wasn't popular until about the third century. And it's said to have gathered popularity, because at the time when St. Helena, the mother of Constantine, the emperor, the first, Constantine the first, who converted to Christianity, Helena went on a pilgrimage to the, to Palestine, on a journey to Palestine, and she was reported, is reported to have brought back to Rome the true cross of Jesus, this is what they said. And so when she brought it back to Rome, it became, it began to gather popularity at that point in Roman churches, especially in that area, that they would put the body, the corpus of Jesus on the cross as a, as a, again, a symbol of, the full, the full symbol of the Christian, of the crucifixion service, and then so, so this is where that originated in Rome, and and that's why we, we still incorporated much, because that was about the same time that Christianity became first the recognized religion, that, you know, a safe religion in Rome, and then it became shortly after that, it became the stated religion of Rome. Now, this, the cross, of course, is not the only symbol that you would see coming into a church. I'm sure, and I'm not just talking about St. Pius, but I'm sure that, as you've gone into other churches elsewhere, I think, and I think even in St. Pius, you're gonna see different symbols for, for Christ or for the, for the crucifixion or resurrection. One of them is this one here. And that's what that is, is a symbol for Christ. What it, what it, where it comes from is, that is the Greek letter Chi, or which is written almost like an X, like our own X in our own alphabet. And, and so this is the beginning of the word. Let me see here. Beginning of the words Staros. It was and so it was I mean, beginning of the word Chiasmus. And so that had a different connotation than, than the word Staros or Krux. As a, as the Latin word Krux or Staros, which was the cross. The Chiasmus has different connotations, it is not exactly sure, but they think it is a it is a short, like an abbreviation for the name of Christ. Because it, this is what the word, what the name of Jesus, of Christ is, how you spell it in Greek, begins with the, with the Chi. And, and so that became a symbol of Christ in it, and again, it it was used to abbreviate the name of Christ. And various pre-Christian symbols also associated with the Chiasmus began to be interpreted, interpreted in the, in terms of the mystery of the pre-existent Christ, meaning before he was born. So it became as the theology for Christ as the Son of God, and as Son of God before he was even conceived in the womb, was, was developed more thoroughly. This became, became a more popular sign at that point in time, and that was again around, I think around the year, the 300s, and, and that, in that timeframe. Another symbol for Christ was this, it's an I and an X monogram, it's called the IX monogram, or it's a Christian monogram, or it can be XI monogram, however you want to say it. Probably, again, it's a IX monogram would be a combination of the letter I for Iota, or Jesus. And X for Chi, which is for Christos. So I was, is the word, the letter J in Latin did not exist at that point in time, so they would use an I wherever J would be, we would use a J. They would use I, so Jesus would be Jesus. And X would be Christo, the first, first word, first letter of the spelling of Christ. So Jesus Christ. And again, it became a symbol used in, in churches to symbolize Christ, but also being, it began to be used in Christian literature, or not literature, but Christian manuscripts. So for instance, and some of the letters that were written by the fathers of the church, some of the letters that were written by the patristic writers, some of the letters that were written by the early saints of the church, those use sometimes this monogram to symbolize Christ. And and that, that was also seen as early as the second century common era. Another monogram that was used sometimes, and that you see in a church too. Is that, it's called a starogram. Excuse me. It's also called the Tau Ro. And it's a its early occurrences again, are pre-Christian, and it's used by, on copper coins that, that King Herod, the first King Herod the Great had printed up 37 years before, and 37 B.C. So he interpreted, this was interpreted on that coin as a representation of the tri, tri-talcon, which is indicating what the coin's value was, and and Greek, and Roman money, or Palestinian money. It was first used to abbreviate the Greek word for cross. Okay, so it's a symbol of the cross, all right? In very early New Testament manuscripts, we can see it used, again, anytime they're going to write the cross, they, they might just write this, or might have just printed that up as a symbol, and not printed the rest of the word up. And that's called the Staros, and, and again, this was used the early second century as well. Now, a little variation on this. Is, this is called the Chi Ro, okay? Chi and Ro, I guess. English pronunciation is Chi Ru. I'm not very good at my, at my Greek. It's also known as the Crismor. And it's one of the earliest forms of a crystalgram, again, it's meant to represent Jesus, representing the name Christ, Savior, Anointed One, Messiah. And, and again, if you printed out, if I printed out the Greek, Greek lettering, X would be the, the first one, P would be the next. And and, and this would be in such a way that the vertical stroke of the row intersects the center of the Chi. Also, the thing about the Chi Ro and the Chi, okay? The X was also a symbol of a, of a cross too. And so with this P there, and in the Chi, and the, the storygram, I'm sorry, in the storygram, you see with the, with the horizontal line across, you see the you see what it is, is they, it looks like a cross with with the body of Christ on it. Sort of, with this being a very simplistic drawing of the head, very ancient or you know, from the, from the caveman days, so to speak, days of drawing of the head of Christ on the cross. So it became a representation of the, of the, of the body on the cross, it became a representation of the crucifixion as well. So it became, in a sense, the first of, of in, at least in pictures, it became the first of a representation of the crucifixion itself with the body present there. This was used, this symbol was used by Constantine the Great, who reigned as the Emperor of Rome from the years 306 to 337, that's the first emperor, Constantine the first, the, the son of Helena. He now, one of his biographers, and it's not, they're not sure how authoritative this is, but one of his biographers wrote that he had a dream before he went into the battle, into a battle, and in that dream, he was told that if he carried this standard with this symbol on it, that he would not, that he would win the battle, and, and then he had another dream with it, that showed if he didn't walk, go into the battle with that standard, that he would not, he would lose the battle. So as soon as he woke up, worked all, he put this on the top of his standard, which is basically the, a flagpole that carried the emperor's flag on it. Carried his name and his shield, and so to speak, and he also had to put on his, his shield for protection in battle as well, so that he had, and several of his members, the members of his army did the same thing. And they went, went into that battle, and they won that battle, and it became a, a part of his, part of the Roman uniform, so to speak, as, at the time of his campaign in Gaul, which was a little later than that, which is modern day France, of course, and he had it placed on a shield and, and his flagpole, and they and they won all these campaigns during his reign. So the Chi Ro became, and then it became the official insignia of the empire for, for Constantine. So the next one. So, and I'm sure, like I said, all of these, I'm sure you've seen in churches, and many of them, I'm sure you've seen in St. Pius, or St. Joseph's. This one is another one we see frequently on, on book covers sometimes, we see them on, on, in Christian art. It's IHS, and what does, what does this mean? It's I know sometimes when, when people speak about it, they talk about it, and they say it means that in his service. But we have to remember again, you know, these, these are from the second century or so. I'm sorry, sorry, from the seventh century, and the Roman Empire was still in existence at that point, and Latin was pretty much the basic language of much of, certainly Western Europe, and, and it and so they were using Latin words, they weren't, this wouldn't have been for Latin expressions, so it wouldn't have been for English expressions, but it would have been for Latin expressions, or it could be also a Greek expression as well. Because IHS is actually the first three letters of in Greek of the name of Jesus, all right? So that's the the Iota, or J, so to speak. H is for the eta, and the S is for sigma. So Iota, eta, sigma, and that meant, that, those were the first three letters in how you would spell the name of Jesus in Greek. And, and so it could be seen as a symbol of the beginning, of Jesus' name. It could be also used in, in Christian literature and documents as well, to, because sometimes you see it in, in in the old Bibles and stuff, when a, when a paragraph or something begins with, with Jesus' name, sometimes they will start it out in, in some kind of fancy print at the top of the page, and show you, and move into Jesus did this, or said that, or whatever. And so it's meant kind of an abbreviation as well. And but in, in Latin, the let's see. Like I said, Latin is, it's similar because I and J were not systematically distinguished until the 17th century, and because I N J were not systematically distinguished until the seventeenth century and, and, uh, so, and, but in, by the seventeenth century, it became J S, J H S and J H C, which are the equivalents in to I H S and I H C in, in the Greek and the Latin. So the La- the, um, the Greek, a- another thing you might see, it might look like this. This is, uh, this is for the Greek translation of that. I'm sorry, this is Latin, this is Greek. But it's, but they mean the same thing. And, um, and then it's, uh, it's also sometimes interpreted, interpreted as Jesus, Jesus, Jesus our Savior. Okay, in Greek, that's Jesus our Savior. And this is, uh, sometimes, as I said, "in his service" or "Jesus omnum salvator," which is Jesus, Savior of, of men. And, um, and it's sometimes connected to inoxigno, which English language interprets as "in his service." But again, these are known as backformed acronyms, okay? It wasn't used in English until the fourteenth century, when Pierce Plamen, uh, used it in his manuscript. Some other things you might see are these. It's I N R I or I N B I. Now, these are was the, this is supposed, is supposed to represent the Latin representation or inscription on, on the crucifix of Jesus. Jesus, the I for the J, Nazarenos, Rex Juden or Juden. Yeah, again, the I for the J. And this is the, uh, let's see, where is it? I can't remember what, uh, oh, Jesus, this is the Greek, which is Jesus, the Nazarene. Like, I'm not, I'm not gonna try the Greek. King of Jude, of the Jews. So these are meant to be the, the Greek, the Latin inscription and the Greek inscription placed on, on top of the crosses, we're told in, in the Gospel of John, that, um, it was written in Latin, Greek and, and Hebrew on, on the top of the cross for everybody to see who passed by that this fellow had, uh, been sentenced to death because he proclaimed himself to be the king of the Jews, other than, and not, not to allow Caesar to be the king, okay? This wasn't really a, on, in early art, it wasn't part of a lot of the, uh, the, the artist's renditions of the crucifixion. As a, as time went on, maybe about the fifteen hundreds, it began to get, get popularity. There was a, there's a story of a, this fellow, Pedro Goncalves de Mentosa, who in fourteen ninety-two was supposed to have obtained or found the actual tablet that had had the inscription written on it of, on the cross that Pil- Pilate had inscribed and put on the cross, was said to have obtained this in the Holy Land, and he brought it to Rome. And so it was a lo- you know, according to, according to Saint, Saint, uh, I mean, according to this Pedro Goncalves, that's where, that's when it began to gather popularity. And, um, now, just a little bit, I wanna go back a little bit on the crucifixion. In Western Christianity, most crucifixions and many depictions of the crucifix do include a, a plaque or parchment placed above his head. And it's called a titulus or title, bearing only the Latin letters. Occasionally carved into, directly into the cross, sometimes it's usually placed above the head of Jesus, uh, nailed to, nailed to it as well. In Eastern Christianity, the, both the Eastern Orthodox Church and the Eastern Catholic Church, they use, and the, uh, Greek, they use the Greek letters instead of the, the Roman letters as well, of course. And, and then sometimes they translate them "the king of the world, Jesus Christ, Jesus the Nazarene, king of the world." Meaning, and what they're, what they're, uh, proclaiming there is that not what, what they, what Pilate put on the cross, they're not making a, a historical depiction. They're doing it in their icon, iconograph, iconography. Iconography. And they are, in their iconography, what they're depicting is what is the spiritual reality behind the physical reality that is, that is viewed. So when they picture the, the crucifixion on a, on an icon, any of the Russian icons you know, any of the Greek or any of the icons from the East that you've seen, they have this depiction there, what they're portraying is this, the spiritual reality, reality behind the physical reality. Now, so that's, those are some symbols that I'm trying to explain. I hope I've done a good job of it, I don't know. And, uh, and that people have asked me about, so I figured I'd give, give them a little explanation here. And, um, somebody else asked me another question. Well, first of all, are there any questions about these? Hi? No? Okay. If you have any, just raise your hands and do whatever you have to do to get my attention or get Michelle's attention. She's watching on Facebook, so you can still ask questions via, via Facebook. Just by adding something in comment, right? Yep. So, another question that people have asked me we'll explain a little bit is about called, uh, well, they wanna know what, what a state of grace is and what, what, um, and how it is that one gets to die in a state of grace. Well, I think the first thing we have to do if we're gonna understand what a state of grace is, you know, is to understand what grace is first. And that, we have to realize that grace, this is right out of the Catholic catechism, "our justification comes from the grace of God." Grace is favor. The free and undeserved help that God gives us to respond to his call and to become, to become children of God. Grace is also a participation in the life of God. It introduces us to the intimacy of the trinitarian life. Uh, grace is also, uh, the vocation to eternally live, to eternal life is supernatural. And it depends upon God's gratuitous initiative. So he, for he alone can reveal and give himself. So, what does all that mean? That's a good question. Sometimes I have trouble understanding that too. When you go to the catechism of the Catholic Church, you get a lot of Thomistic theology and philosophy. So it's, um, and Thomistic theology and Aristotelian philosophy. So that's, uh, kind of what we have to sift through here a little bit. The way I, I see it is that it's, as I said, grace is free and undeserved. It's given to us by God, even though we don't deserve it. It's kind of like, well, like, equated to is, is life. Each and every one of us is alive today. Thanks be to God. But, um, each and every one of us is alive. And none of us, not, not any one of us did anything to become alive. Not any one of us did anything to be the child of our parents. We, one day we, we became. And it was not by our will that would, that it happened. It, um, and even you, our parents didn't know that we were gonna be who we were, who we were gonna be when they participated in that, in that mystery. It was totally and freely a gift. Or to some, it may be considered a curse, but I, I like to like, look at it as a gift. And and we did nothing to deserve it or to make it happen. Grace is like that. It's given to us freely. We did nothing to deserve it and we do nothing to make it happen. It's just given freely. Now, so that's what grace, a general definition of what grace is. Now, there's also, you might say, the grace of Christ. Okay, Christ is the second person in the Trinity, of course. And he is, he in and of himself is a gift to humanity. And by that gift to me and to you individually too, and us as a community. He's, um, it's a gratuitous gift that God makes to us of his own life. He's infused by the Holy Spirit into our soul to heal it of sin and to sanctify it. It is the sanctifying or deifying grace received in baptism. It is in us the source of the work of sanctification. Again, straight out of the catechism. And, and again, I think it's, um, you know, you look at some of the writings of Saint Paul. And it's, and it all, I always go back to so often that the quote from Romans, "while we were still sinners, Christ died for our sins." While we were still sinners, Christ died for our sins. We didn't do anything to deserve Christ coming into this world and becoming a member of the human race. We didn't do anything to, um, it wasn't because we were good people that Christ decided he would give his life for us. It was because God is good. And God is generous. And God is merciful. And God is giving. And he gave himself to us before we were even ready for it, you might even say. And I think that's why, one of the reasons why I like the idea of you, of infant ba- baptism so much. And it's because an infant doesn't know what's happening in baptism. An infant will experience it on a whole other level and, uh, but it's up to the church, his, his or her community, to teach that child what it, what it was that they received on that, on the, as a gift on that day. But grace is also a part of, of human experience too. I mean, the sacrament is a human experience. It's not, it's not a, I mean, it's not only a spiritual experience. You know, when we talk about spiritual experiences in prayer, sometimes it's, you can't touch it, you can't see it, you can't feel it. You can only feel it inside, but not feel it outside. Can't use your fingers to touch it. But you can, uh, but with baptism, there are physical signs of it. You feel the water. You feel the, uh, in any of the sacraments, you feel the water, you feel the oil. You feel, you feel the, uh, sign of the cross being made on your forehead. You feel, you taste the bread, you trace, taste the wine at communion. You, um, you receive the sacrament, the sacrament of penance, there's supposed to be a laying on of hands where the priest lays his hands on you, gives you the, the merc- merciful, the gift of, of, uh, God's mercy and forgiveness. And, uh, and then gives you absolution. So it's, you hear, you touch, you smell, you taste. All of these are part of every one of the sacraments there. Our senses are part of them. And, um, it's, so it's, they're telling us that that grace is part of human experience too. It isn't just a spiritual reality, but it's a, it's a physical, emotional reality as well. Um, so, so Christ came into the world and he gives us a way, in a sense, to experience God's grace in our senses. But also, it has to be, but it has to be connected to our spirits. With that spiritual reality and that physical reality, just like the Greeks in their iconography, just like the Eastern Church in their iconography. Physical and spiritual reality need to be connected to one another. They can't be apart from one another. So that's what the grace of Christ is. Now sanctifying grace, what is ma- sanctifying means to make holy, right? Sanctifying grace is the supernatural state of being infused by God, which permanently adheres in the soul. It is a vital principle of the supernatural life. As the rational soul is the vital principle of a human being's natural life. It is not a substance, but it is a real quality that becomes part of the soul substance. Although commonly associated with the possession of the virtue of charity, sanctifying grace is distinct from this virtue, is yet distinct from that, this virtue. Charity rather belongs to the will. Whereas sanctifying grace belongs to the whole soul, mind, will and affections. It is called sanctifying grace because it makes holy those who possess the gift by giving them a participation in the divine life. It is a life which Christ taught, it is the life which Christ taught that he has in common with the Father and which those who are in a state of grace share with him. So, that's another convoluted definition. Thank you, Saint Thomas. And, uh, we, um, so supernatural, I mean, so sanctifying grace, hmm, how do we define this one a little bit? Make it more real or, I think, again, it's, uh, this is the, this is, I've been wrestling with this one all day long, how to, how to go about this. And, um, it's, uh, it's something, this gift that we're given to us, it, it doesn't, um, melt away. You know, it doesn't, uh, leave us. It doesn't leave our soul. It is gone in, it's like, when I was, I, I was ordained a priest, right? And when I was ordained a priest, what happened was, they tell me that, they said I had this, um, in Deacon Mike, when he was ordained a deacon. He was, um, we were changed in this, in our state of being. Not, so we were, we were humans still, of course. But at the same time, we were human, we were, he was a deacon who was human, or I was a deacon who was human. And I was a priest, and I am a priest who's human. And, um, and that will never change, even when I go to eternity. I will be a priest in, in eternity too. Deacon Mike will be a deacon in eternity too. Now, baptism, the state of baptism, when we're given that, it's the same way. Where, where, by this, by the grace of baptism, where, by this, by the grace of baptism, as it says, where it's, um, the source of the work of sanctification, it is, it is, um, the sanctifying or deifying grace received in baptism. The one infused by the Holy Spirit in our, in our soul to heal it of sin and to sanctify it. We are healed of sin and we are made holy by the grace of Christ. And that will never change. We will be healed of that original sin and we will be made, we are made holy by that original sin. So, we are sanctified by that grace. So, that, that's how I look at sanctifying grace a little bit. It's a more permanent val, value given to us. Each and every one of us receives that sanctifying grace in baptism. Each and every one of us in our confirmation receives that sanctifying grace um, of the Holy Spirit infused into our, into ourselves and giving us those, healing us and giving us uh, access to the, to the gifts of the Holy Spirit. And, um... And so, it's, uh... It, these are things that are permanent. We will always, in a sense, be a member of the body of Christ. Now... Can we lose that? Can we somehow... We can't lose the, the, the grace of having been healed of original sin. There's no way you can lose that. Just like I cannot lose my priesthood. Deacon Mike cannot lose his deacon uh, nature. But what we can lose is some of the sanctification, so to speak. So, when we talk about, so the next thing we talk about is a state of grace. How do we know we're in a state of grace? Well, it's a simple definition, actually. A condition of a person who is free from mortal sin and is pleasing to God is the state of being in God's friendship and the necessary condition of the soul at death in order to attain heaven. Okay? And I think this is where uh, the, the people that have asked me about this question, that's where they're, they're centered on. And I think a lot of people are a little bit worried about, you know, am I gonna make it to heaven? And, um... And I think it's, uh... It's a legitimate question, yes and no. But as it says, it's a condition of a person who is, who is freed from mortal sin and pleasing to God. Now... So, that means basically you have, have to not commit any mortal sins, but, but if you have committed a mortal sin, that you've gone to confession for it. Um, and that you've made an attempt to, uh, and that you were sorry for your sin and that you, um... promised to sin no more. And you were sorry for your sin, not because, or not only because you were afraid of the fires of hell, but also because it offended God. And you were, you were sorry to have offended God. So, it's about, it's got to do with your, our, our motives a little bit. That's where it gets a little murky for us, I think, as human beings. Because I mean, it... I, I don't know anybody who isn't, who is a little bit afraid of going to hell. And I don't know anybody who was, um... only sorry for having committed a mortal sin because it offended God. But if not, but also a little bit sorry as well, or afraid as well, at the same time. That's where the old Catholic guilt might come in. Excuse me. And, um... You know, so it's... A state of grace is kind of an esoteric thing. It's hard to put pin down and say what it is, what it isn't. But, um... We can, we can obtain a state of grace through sacramental grace. And that's conferred by the, by the valid and fruitful reception of the sacraments, okay? Meaning that we receive these sacraments in a state of grace, or we haven't, we're not in a state of grace, we go to penance, receive the sacrament of penance in a state of grace. And then we're in a state of grace and we receive the sacraments in this state of grace. Um, it's communicated in baptism, penance, the anointing of the saint when needed. It's always increased when a sacrament is received in a state of grace. So, your, your state of, your sacramental grace is increased when you receive it in a state of grace, and actual grace is given by all the sacraments, okay? And, um... Either actually at the time of reception or also by a title as a person needs divine help. The sacramental character is indelibly imprinted on the soul in baptism, confirmation, and the priesthood, as I said, and, and deacon, any ordination. A distinctive sacramental grace is imparted by each of the seven sacraments, corresponding to the respective purpose in the supernatural life of the soul. Now, how do we die in a state of grace? According to Catholic teaching, someone who dies in a state of mortal sin will go to hell. However, it's not quite that simple. Someone who commits a mortal sin but dies without confession is not necessarily in a state of mortal sin. So, the usual means of forgiveness is in the sacrament of penance or confession. The Church teaches that a perfect contrition for sin can suffice to restore grace if going to confession is impossible. For instance, if you're on your deathbed and you can't speak, if, uh... If there, if you're in an area of the world or country or place at home where and there's no way you can get in touch with a priest to hear your confession, um, that's also... And you, but you have a perfect contrition. Now, again, that word perfect is a bit misleading, too. Because it, it doesn't mean, oh, my goodness, I, I, I felt sorry because I felt afraid of, of going to hell and I made my penance anyway, so I made my confession. That means I'm gonna go to hell, right? No, because it merely means that the penitent is sorry for the sin because it offends God. And not because he or she is afraid of going to hell, or because he or she might, has gone to jail for it, or so on. Although these motives can be mixed in. But the repentance must include the sorrow, so it must include. It doesn't even have to be the majority feeling. It must include that sorrow for the sin. A true sorrow for the sin. Not just, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You know, sort of like a kid says when, when you tell them to make, say they're sorry to their, to another student at school. Uh, like a two-year-old might say that, that, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay? But really, a, a true repentant, a true sorrow for our sin because it offends God. And, um... And so, that, that's all it requires. That's all that is required to make a good and, uh... perfect contrition, so to speak.
Father Abbot?
Yes?
Uh, question from Facebook. Uh, what if a priest denies absolution?
If a priest denies absolution? Well... I think that, again, if you're on your deathbed and a priest denies absolution, I, I would, uh, still, I would go with this definition. Really, I think, uh... Otherwise... I would, uh, talk to that priest and see why they denied it. You know? But, um, if you are truly sorry for your sin and you are truly, um... not going to commit that sin again, the, the matter for confession is there. Okay? The only reason a priest might be able to deny deny absolution is if, uh... you're not sorry for your sin and you make that blatantly clear. And if you, um... Are, if you're, if you tell the priest, oh, yeah, you know, I robbed the bank yesterday, I'm gonna rob the bank tomorrow, but I'm, I'm confessing for the one I did yesterday. You know, that, um, it's, uh... That you show no, no remorse for it, no, no sorrow for it, no repentance for it. And no, uh, desire not to do it again. I think tho, those are the, that's the only reasons that really that I know that, that, uh... absolution could be, could be denied. Um... You know, so I, I think I would, if that is the case, I would talk to the, to the priest that denied it, if possible. And if not, I, I might, you know, go to another priest. So... So, these, uh, so repentance is really, it's always possible as long as we're alive and even if it, and it doesn't have to be visible to anybody else, either. All right? Now... Along these lines, I'm gonna go into a little bit. What time is it? Yeah, we still got time, right? No, no, we're past. Oops, I'm sorry. Uh, next week, I'll just give a quick overview of purgatory. Okay? And then we'll get into the Mass again. Thank you very much, everybody. Any more, any, no more questions, I assume, right?
Um, just one comment from Janet saying, I believe Saint, uh, Pedro denied absolution if the confessor was not truly sorry.
Yeah, well, that, that would be it, yeah.[1791.15]